So I would like to know, Matt?
Yes.
If we're gonna dig up off of Main Street, put a new water line in, why would we reinstall the speedboat?
Oh, different section.
It is, it is a different section.
But it will be addressed at some point in time, and I can't imagine why you would put that damn thing back.
Just to aggravate you.
But it would be, it seems like it would be the proper time to get rid of that.
It may be the time for the road committee to pick that up. And produce that's it.
Your recommendation, and you're full of shit.
Almost, almost. Food for thought, Mike. Yeah, I will. Anything else from the public up here? Skip, please.
I don't know if you guys are aware of it or not, but this is kind of a road committee thing too. On Red Bond Road, there's a lot of new houses going in. All right, and those people come springtime. Alright, and those people come springtime are gonna be ditching like hell because of the mud. And I'm really curious if we had a little spare time to go out and do some ditching. On the, from the Ward Hill Inn, you can only hear it when about halfway where all the new houses are. There's like four new houses in there in the last three to four months.
Light enough? So it's something you think we can do in-house?
Well, that, I think, I think in-house should go out and do some testing. Cause I, I just probably gonna be some places, there's some ledge and need to find out what we got. And once we find out what we've got, it's probably something you wanna do outside of house.
Yeah.
Because I'm thinking, I don't know this for certain, but I'm thinking you're gonna run into some ledge in the hill. And you might actually have to blast to get some ditching in.
Right.
Either that, you're gonna build a road up three feet one of the other. And.
Depending on what you could, right, be jammered too, but either way, it's expensive.
It's been a problem road for a long time.
Right. We're gonna throw peanuts at it.
Yeah, yeah.
My point, my point being is, there's a lot of new houses going in there.
And I don't think that's gonna slow either. I don't even think that the contractors like, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, and, and with. You know, with, with, with all these new homes going in there, they deserve a little bit of respect.
Yeah, no, for sure, Scott. That's a good point.
And in trying to be proactive, then yeah, we'll see what we got.
Okay. Easy enough? Okay, thank you. Uh, anything else? Nothing? Alright, moving forward here. Uh, number eight, public hearing on proposed uses for twenty-two minutes available. You kidding me?
Well, nobody's saying anything.
Survey's land.
And right, any comments from the public?
Oh, right, yes. Anything from the public in here on that proposed uses?
What is speedboat? Remove one, put it over there, it's be a purpose park.
Oh, don't think on the list.
The board want any comment?
Huh?
You want any comment from anyone else?
Oh, yeah, I mean, please, I mean, if anybody has something to say.
They don't know why they don't, you got all those Christmas stuff coming and everything, why don't you just put, Simon says park in there. I know there's no. Nothing set up, but it can't be more chaotic than the drain hall.
We, we had a, we, he had a small in-house discussion, we had already meeting there of whether we could or not. And I think it would be whether we wanna tackle insurance and the life, because we, if we open it up as a parking lot. We have to meet the criteria of what our insurance is gonna want us, and I don't know what that expected meeting probably.
It's not that many parking spots, once you get them in there, they're gonna have people to get, like it's, is it even twenty?
What, oh, buddy, you went all the way around that, you give away fifty or sixty?
No.
The man of the answers, let's let him speak.
No, I don't need some of that parking. It's not gonna be parking, so you can throw that out. The issue that we have with parking and having it be a parking area is the fact that you then create a super dangerous intersection at a school crossing. Because you have an exit where the people already enter coming right out of that school. You've got residential driveways, two or three, right across the street. And you're gonna have accidents there just about every day.
Why did it worsen? The one coming out of the school ever side in?
That's what I'm saying. Once you add this entrance and exit, if DOT would approve a change of use. I don't think that they would, or something like this, but if you just said we're gonna have. You, you use it and allow people to go up there for pickup, right? At school, those people are all gonna be all moving at the same time, and it's gonna be super, super dangerous.
Let's see that. Yeah, I.
Yeah.
Yeah. Soon as people start parking on the side of the road, they're gonna try to sneak out between vehicles, so I, I, no, I, I get it, I do.
If it was staff parking only, or something like that, you might be able to get away with it. But if you do it during events, you're asking, I mean, like, it's gotta be organized as a staff event.
But I mean, there was a couple in there the other night there, then I parked in there just to watch the show.
But they're gonna, they're gonna treat, they're gonna treat it just like they do. Over in Usula, they have a really long, that was always a bone of contention. When Lester owned the store, they put, they put Kirby in there to stop, to stop everybody just flowing into Route Two. Along that whole long parking lot, he took it out a couple times.
Yeah.
He likely told him that he was gonna pay for it the next time, because they wanted to make sure that they restricted and limited. How often you can get in the end, because you're talking about that parking lot would be similar access as like Usula's long span. So they won't open up and allow.
Yeah, he took it out bulldozers too.
But I mean, that's, it's, it's the same thing. DOT did not take kindly, they, they wanted to control the flow coming out of Usula's parking lot. And that was thirty years ago.
Body, yeah, body at least, so.
I'm happy to submit the request to DOT.
I'd be stubborn, oh god.
Look, right, I just, that's my sentiment, and as we move on into the survey results. You're gonna see what people want. So you do, there was a big push obviously from school folks that want school parking. And so that's thirty-six percent of your response. Nearly one in four folks said, we want more parking for this.
So you're on the pickleball thing, no one can pull a car in there and pull them back out?
So we would depend on the layout of the lot. I mean, depend on the layout of the lot.
Yeah, some of the designs actually had built-in parking to the pickleball. I think how you do it.
I, I guess, to keep things focused and not, but not control it, that's what we did. Is review the ideas that came through on the survey feedback. Yes, they ordered in terms of the volume that you received. Uh, the frequency that they have, you had a hundred and forty-five respondents, sixty-six percent of them are taxpayers residents. Then you've got fifteen percent, the majority, you've got eighty-five percent of respondents that have direct connection to this community. So they're all good ideas. Some people had five or six, some people had zero, because I couldn't make sense of what they wrote. Um, they'll still get entered with a gift card, but, so you can see what they've got and what folks have submitted for ideas. And then on the next page, just to kind of ease your thinking, on the left side of the next page, hopefully on the bottom. What works together? You know, there are things that you could do. If you wanna just leave it a relatively undeveloped lot, what can we do? So you've got a green space, a farmer's market, an outdoor learning space, a pop-up area, and a community garden, could all happen on the same property. Those are ideas that all came in, independently upon scheduling and everything else, you could do that. If you decide to go tennis, pickleball, you have folks here that they just want to pickleball only. Most of the people that submitted responses were mixed use. They did not want pickleball only, they wanted tennis, pickleball, or multi-use sports. Um, so if you think about getting that multi-use surface in there, you can accomplish some pop-up space theoretically, farmers market, and those recreational activities. Or you can do just tennis, pickleball, walking track, and multi-use courts. You start to combine different ideas on that one area. Um, you face obstacles like parking or whatnot, or, you know, just interested groups. But those are just my half-witted ideas as to.
Yeah.
Using that property, getting the highest and best use of that property.
Yeah.
Not just open space, which is one of them, but there was a poll in the other garden that came in late today, it's not in here, but. That could easily be incorporated into this and that, but we also wanna keep an eye on our maintenance responsibilities. So then on the right, I kind of did shot out what's the highest and best use of the property, and then adding questions around for us, the public to think about. What are the community needs? Is it aligned with what we've seen as our long-term uh, goals? Are we saving jobs or creating jobs? Is that what's important to us with this law? Impact on economic development, are there disadvantages of what we're talking about? Um, is the proposed conversion affordable? I think that's something everybody's concerned about. It was just a handful of things that as we think about projects that people submit on surveys, like, are they still having their own mind? Um, how we're gonna move forward?
I have one more question on that. Turning into farmer's market or anything like that. You got now where you're gonna park guys, you're gonna use the school parking lots for this?
Of course you are, of course you are.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, any multi-use facility they have, you're gonna have multiple people at the same time, they're gonna be out on the road. Or we're gonna have, they're gonna be at school. I mean, we don't have, the downside to developing that, we're gonna have. Many key part, the possibility of multiple people there at the same time, what are you gonna do with the people, what are you gonna do with the vehicle there? You're gonna, you, you don't wanna use it as parking lot, but yet when you use it for a multi-function, what are you gonna do with the company?
Yeah, you're gonna have farmer's market, you know, people gonna haul and.
It does, but I'm, yes, yes, it's true, but I'm just saying you're gonna end up having that controversy swing back around. Because the school is not public park, you gotta know, believe you, I don't, I, I, you know what, it's, it is what it is. You're gonna, you're gonna have another circling issue there.
Yeah.
If you open it up and have multiple people there, it's a, are, are there potential for that?
If the, whatever we decide to do is tied into the community center, then are we allowed to park at the school? Cause that's technically our community center, right?
I, I, I think parking at the school is always going to be.
I mean, like, when school's not a question.
It, we, it is public problem, it's, yeah, it's a public problem, right, right, there's nothing saying that we're making it the parking to, like, say, the library, if you will. But it is the parking to the library currently, right?
There's parking on the road, I mean, like, there's.
Parking is always gonna be an issue in that area, I, I mean.
It is, and all, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, Usula store to downtown, down to the park, including Usula Park, parking remains an issue. And with the way we're growing with sports and stuff, it will always remain an issue.
I mean, and I don't wanna be insensitive to the parking folks, because obviously there's a large block of folks that want additional parking. But I think, as a defender of the townspeople and taxpayers, it was case in point yesterday at the election, if you actually voted in person, and that is. We have young people, old people, people of varying abilities coming to vote. And that school staff with advanced communication from administration still parked front and center. They didn't give you the courtesy of going to the lower lot, or filling up the back lots, or anything else. And yet it's the first one to get the contingency together to scream to the town, fix our problem. And so again, I know that the school is a part of our community and it's our younger generation, but they've gotta be a part of the solution and not amplifying the problem. And that's just really kind of discouraging, because it's when we're doing something, we acquired a lot that the school has had first refusal for the last decade.
Yeah, I mean, I think it goes way deeper. A lot of people who want the parking for that. This is the first year that I've not had to go to Mill Stream for pickup and drop-off for the kids, and I can tell you from, you know, eight years of doing that. People don't go where they're supposed to go. They are lazy and they will make their own parking spots and double park people, and so they're in the upper parking lot instead of going where they need to. If people just parked where they were supposed to, it's not as big of an issue, but you've got people who try to invent stuff, and then it really does become an, and I don't. Disagree that it's a problem there, but the problem is the enforcement of people parking like courteous human beings, doing what they're supposed to, and there's no one telling someone. Don't park in front of another car so they can't get out, go down there and you can walk, you're fine. Um, that's the problem at Mill Stream, so the parking there, like, that needs to be a school level, like, someone out there going, that's not a parking spot.
If you serve at the school district for a profit, but then worry about.
There was somebody that submitted, they did, placing covenants on the property and turning it. You know, it's not gonna be industrial, like, things like that.
But I mean, and then they can come right up there, they already got an interest.
Right.
Kick a hole in the fence and. In the hood, yeah.
So we've had a lot of ideas come, some of them are very informal, some of them are jokes that I may have excluded for you. Um, and I think we're getting a lot of the same ideas coming in, you know, there's prevailing ideas, maybe three or four schools above.
Yeah.
And so we need to start to get consensus, we're not gonna be pure opposite, we've done that, we've been public process on this, that's what we pledge to the people. So the board needs to really think about how we want to move forward. Do you guys, right now, wanna cut it back down to three or four proposals? Do you want to scuttle the meeting to talk about this? Um, but we need to start getting something to take shape, that we can then go back to people and say. Here are our two options, or here are our three options, and allow that, because I need to start putting numbers to your prices.
Yeah, right.
Like your projects and.
I, I agree, and I, I.
I like this, that big cluster.
Me too, I should say the same.
I think it's the lowest maintenance.
I think the most amount, like, you always think, how, what's gonna give the most people the most benefit? And having it be a multi-use course with those other things, it's, it opens it up to more people. People can do pickleball, but maybe if we make it so they can do, they can roller skate on it, or they can ice skate on the winter, or whatever it is. Like, how do we make it so the most amount of Norwalk residents can actually use and appreciate and enjoy this, this space?
Just, I did not make these charts just the way you want or another, I was just trying to get you to think.
Well, I already knew where I was.
Yeah, I, I was making my own, and then I cut the page and I was like, oh, yay.
I just, cause it looks like, okay, you've got a couple, I'll say, junk ideas, cause only one or two people kicked them in.
Yeah.
But when you started pairing those things, that was all I was trying to.
Yeah, for myself, I can't, I can't get past a new library. I mean, we have, so, uh, as far as library goes, uh.
We can't even cover it right now, yeah, yeah.
They just have no way of ever.
Guys, I'm guessing I'm on the rude train, they're a little tired, but when you guys are talking, we can't hear, but neither can the folks on online.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
See, I, I can't get by the library. The library doesn't have the ability to purchase a piece of property. If you look at the layout of our town, they don't have a place where they can go and build a new library. It's not gonna, but. Be available or accessible like this property is. Uh, I was against the library where it sits right now, down on the sports fields, when it went there, it went there to fill a need, right, and it was free. Uh, and numbers have gone up quite substantially with the library, and with our new staff and the new outlook at the library, it seems to be growing. Uh, and I don't want that to be squad lacking vocabulary, I don't want it to be hindered by its location, and I do feel that it is. Out of sorts in its current location, I don't think that should be its permanent resting place.
Mm-hmm.
So this presents an opportunity for the library to move into a real lot, uh.
And these other things. I think we talked about this in, one of the other, so where the library is now.
Yeah.
What can that be used for?
E- exactly, I think that's where you can move the.
Is there a possible swap? You know, what we're thinking for this spot, but the library there, and maybe develop that as, because then it's attached to the ball field.
Yes.
It's attached to the rec area already.
Do that though?
That's, well, that's.
Yes.
Library is.
We own the side of the bank, so where the, where you have that deep, steep bank that comes down off that lower parking lot where it's library only parking. We, that bank is the property line, so when they push all the snow down there to cause drainage problems on a field. That's why we call the school and say you can't push snow on our property, cause you're towards the street.
And my only, the, when there are sporting events there, that's like a disaster. So if that library were to move, I would almost say, can you add some more spots where that is, so that when there are events, they're not all lined up on the road?
It's tough, I don't know how parking would work up there, I, I'm not a.
Yeah, I think parking is always gonna be an issue.
It is.
I'm just saying.
I'd rather see more space in front of the library for your public use stuff, whether you want something walk-in related, or farmer's market stuff that could be held up there out of the parking lot. Still utilizing the school parking lot for parking for those functions, uh, but I. Right, I, I don't, I don't wanna say I'm against any parking in that new lot, but I would really hate to see it be used for a laptop.
I don't mean the new lot, I mean.
She means down, like, with it.
The library moves where the library currently is.
Would you transition right into these pickleball courts, I believe?
I'm saying, could it be parking?
No.
Okay.
Just because there's no access. Well, you know, I mean, if, if, logistically, if elevation, it doesn't work, and then you'd be. Access goes on the side of the fields, which is only for ambulances. Uh, so really, it's, it's best suited to be.
Yeah, I like that, yeah.
A school-related thing, and pickleball really fits that, and if we decide to light the fields, which is a topic. Uh, the pickleball community would benefit from that, because then you would have lighted pickleball courts, which the per, I don't wanna say most people that play that are full dirt. But it's gonna be the evening, it's after work, you, you don't, you're not down there at noon time on Monday playing. Right, so Saturday and Sunday would give some real options for the community that's playing pickleball to be down there at night, uh.
If we moved the, um, library, would, like, there still be no parking up in the new lot? Would people be parking still down?
It would be, it would be tough, right? Do you give some parking space up there, or do you leave more space for a, a, a garden or a farmer's market space? Again, I hate to see it be used for costs.
It's not that big of a spot, like, what, like, it's really, like, it's really.
Would you have to go to the OT again and say, listen, we're gonna put a building, an X-size building in the back, and we wanna put five or six parking spots, so you can pull in the library, cause that's due to the OT question.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be. Exactly correct, I think it's about the use, and that's how it's all categorized, was the use, yes. And when we have usage data for the library, last month was the number one month in the history of the library, for people coming and going to the floors of that library.
And how many was that?
Uh, I can't tell you right now, it's on my email on the other computer. But every month, every month Kelly is emailing out, it's bigger than, and bigger than the last, and it's the most that we've ever had.
Hmm, so is it like forty-five people in the month?
No, you're talking about, uh, and, and I can't talk about unique customers, I'm talking about customers walking through that door, and if you walk through five times a week, that's five. Like, you're talking like four hundred.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they're going to know, like, what is, how many residents are. Like, if it, if it's four hundred that are going through, if it's someone's going four times a month, is that like just a hundred people, or is it five hundred people? Like, the demographics of it, I think would be, if we're even considering looking at building and accepting that enormous cost that's gonna come with that. I think we need to know the demographics, is this, is eighty percent of it young families and parents doing that during the daytime? Because we need to make sure we're hearing proper, or is it more our older, you know, population, is it a full mix? Because I think that if we're gonna be in the spot where we're gonna design and build something. Because I think that if we're gonna be in the spot where we're gonna design and build something, we should be building it based on, like, the usage and what types of unique features we might want for those.
Is that what you were recommending, or are you recommending just moving?
Oh, well, no, I I definitely want to move the, not that trailer, God, no, uh, I I do want to build a new building.
That was twenty years ago.
That, and it was, yeah, no, I I myself, it would be something on the, on, sort of, take pride, a brick and mortar building, not some fab building, something that will stand the test of time. Uh, but not wasteful, uh, the, I think you were hinting at, would you put other community space inside?
Yeah, well, I mean, like, just think about the term, we have the voting, like, we're gonna build something, we need a bigger space, we need parking, and we need something that can accommodate stuff like that. I think that's always been kind of on like the way ahead, like, funded in the ten, but like, I I just, I don't see, like, with this as like the opportunity, on this small of a lot in the location that it's at, like, to build the library, I just don't think that's.
I don't think there.
Yeah.
I wish I did.
I don't think the library wants that either, if you ask the trustees, that's not what they want either, I don't.
I don't think you'll ever get the kind of like, our kind of weed blocks, or like a vibrant, active library there.
I.
Yes, it's not even big enough lot for a nice library.
Yeah, I mean, stuff like, take the Skowicki library, there's, there's no park, there's sports parks beside the road, or using the bar, of the bank, they're.
Right, you're just a bank. The bank, the street.
Yeah.
So it's, libraries are a dying thing, and they're going away, and it will never be cheaper than now to build. And will we be a community that doesn't have a library, I mean, that's not, I mean, aren't you going to go to the library, and that's not a, yeah, I wanna say, you know.
Then we could find funding for it too, you know, like grants and stuff, cause they.
Very much so, and I don't know what the library has saved, I know the library has always been working towards a building, but I I don't know if that's a realistic thing, or how they get their money. So I don't know really, I don't know those answers.
Are there spots, there are a couple spots on the road right there, right?
Technically, yes.
Not two or three, I think.
Yes. And if you remove the road opening there, there would be an additional one, so there's potential.
Is that, is our, um, um. Downtown sidewalk, is it extending that far?
Then comes all the way outside, well, it goes to the, to that.
But what were we doing in the sidewalk at some point in the future, are we doing all the way to that property?
Yeah. The lights, yeah, yes, because no lights off at the bank, it is funded through a safe access to school.
Okay.
It's the safe access.
So it'll go through, it'll go into the school?
Something. And where they're actually talking about redoing this back entrance, because it's not appropriate, it's too often moving back into something they do. And the school won't fund the sidewalk for that back entrance, which is safety, but, uh, so I think that you'd be surprised how big that lot is. If you put a building that's sufficient enough for an expanded library, I think you might be surprised. And I think you still have room for parking, but I did already make the note of brands, to see, you know, may say libraries, they're federal brands, obviously, Steven Tabitha can't.
Well, that's what I was thinking, you know, people like that.
Right.
But if they know that there's a new, you know, an apartment, how does Scotty can just refurbish there, or, I mean, did the town put that whole bill, or was they, I can't imagine them to be there.
I can't imagine.
No, they do a ton of fundraising.
I think there was a lot of. You know, I went for money.
And then I don't even know what the library people think about this, the trustee, that they like absolutely not.
Right.
I don't, I think they want, like, kind of like, it's more historic, like, more, they want a building that looks like it's got some character, it's been there, I think that's what I'm.
Yeah, I see, I I think it's a way.
So, so do we ask the library committee to give us their thoughts on it?
I, so I have, this was.
Oh, okay.
A while ago, probably six months or more ago, about where is the future of the library? Is it in the building that freezes up, if I don't send public works down, or, uh, kind of the thing, and there was no direction. It was something that kind of got loosely bobbled around, but nothing. Um, obviously, when I approached the subject of our library, and she was excited that she already sent me a list of the things that we could use, that we don't have, and areas that could be adjusted for utility. Um, and so that's encouraging, um, I think that, no, I I'm speculating, but. There might be a sentiment that if we propose the size, I mean, expensive, people would then be inherently opposed to continuing to fund the library, or that the library requires this much money. And that would be something that would be, something that could bring the library down. And personally, I think that's kind of shorting the voter, you know, like, Ben has said, Matt, I don't go to the library and use the library, when was the last time you were in there? Fixing something?
By accident, yeah, exactly.
But, you know, people still do value that, so I think a big component of this proposal might be brands, they do have. A pretty good amount of money through their sources in their reserves, but obviously, you wouldn't wanna go chasing after that unless you're, uh, they're requiring the voters with less than trustee and votes, so.
We have no capabilities or capacity to retrofit and expand the Sophie May library, cause that's a, like, there's just nothing, you can't do anything without.
We're struggling to keep it out of the river now.
Right.
Yeah.
That's been expensive.
All right, I like the library idea, I like the idea of there being like a walking path to some degree, like, maybe around the entire outskirts, especially cause. It'd be cool to do like, uh, um, what do you call it, the books on the trails.
Hold the reading?
Yeah, I think that I've made one. Anyway, that would be cool, I would love for them to be like some sort of, I don't know what you call it, green space, pop-up space, whatever, where there could be like a farmer's market, or like a little thing, you know? Um, like the idea of doing a multi-use course, or where the library currently is, also thinking, and let me do that. Um, like I, as someone who just had a little boy, would love to, and I'm sure I have a family who would love to, like, donate towards this, if it meant, like, we got to, like, put his name somewhere. You know what I mean, like, a campaign type thing, like.
Oh, would it be like. Yes, that's funny, like the bricks and stuff that you.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's actually a really, that's a.
And I'm like.
Yeah, the Montessori school, Fairfield has.
Yeah.
A lot of those little bricks where.
And I'm sure we have, not even people who are kids, like, older people who would be like.
Yes, I. Hundred percent.
My kids still couldn't read.
Yeah.
Look at my thoughts.
Let's. I think we'll just sugar them someday too, definitely look at it as a group.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To particularly say, hey, this is what.
It looks long, uh, it does, and you're right there. Down below coming out of voting area or over to the side, or you're actually curbside, and you look at the square footage.
Yeah, you Google it to a few places, I see.
Yeah.
Right, kind of puts you perspective, but anyway, yeah, yes.
And you're, you don't want to rectangle everything, right?
No, I don't think so, and then.
Might cut out the side or this or that, but.
Yeah, so it seems like we've now pivoted to build consensus around this being one option. For sure.
Because, for me, I'm.
To build a library?
Gathering information, or something, right, to gather information.
I'm not for that, no, but.
Okay.
I think it's just too much of a expense this time.
I mean, there's a option, but it, it, it is, I mean, it may not be a one-year plan, it may be, it may be a five or six-year plan, but at least we're.
No, but, but, no, it's odd. If you decide today, it'd be five years or more.
Pivoted right as one of the things, cause no matter what we do, it's not gonna happen this year, it's, it's probably gonna be a multi-year.
So we have the space.
Right.
Yeah. I just don't wanna be three, four, five hundred grand into make a whole new library, just because we got a, done the land for forty grand, so I don't wanna throw that much money at the library, I, like, just, it's not, we don't have enough people to use it, like.
There must be like organizations and stuff, and like grants that are like trying to save libraries though, like.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be.
Yes.
How much you get bulk on it, man?
I, I think if we had a new, just, if, then we did have a new facility, something that was green space and everything else, it may get used more anyway.
For sure.
But just, then you get back to D O T, if you can't use that to, just some Christmas, Christmas potty parking, they're gonna let you do that to. Cause you're gonna have to get some cars off the road, the people that work in, running, flowers known, every other thing. Hell, go to hell.
Maybe it's.
Would you have to talk to D O T if you were gonna put, like, a, someone's car briefly for a, a farmer's market?
Unlikely.
It seems to make more sense, I mean, if we want a new library somewhere, like, we should be looking for a building that already exists, like that, I mean, if that's, if we wanna dump money on the library, like, let's buy some authority, like. I I don't think we've built something from scratch in that part of the law. I, I just don't think financially it makes any sense to spend that much money, grants or not, like, it's just. Cause the upkeep, we don't have a single building that we don't spend tons of money on, there's always gonna be something. It's gonna be the face that didn't get done the right way, and we're gonna heat that for years and years to come, or it's gonna be something like the new heating, like, it's just going to be an enormous cost, and I just don't. I don't think that that's a priority cost to build a new building for a library, a building for multiple things, maybe, but not a new, no, that's so much money.
But, but your thought, right, what would you wanna see on this lot, you could do anything with the lot.
I think you just make it like multi-use courts, so that, you know, more outdoor recreation activity for people, like, of all ages, whether it's like, you know, play basketball there, or pickleball, or, you know. Kids can do some other stuff, something that, but I do think that with something like that, and it's more costly, like, it needs to have some sort of capability of being more. All season, whether that means it has some type of covered roof or something like that to protect something, but like to increase the longevity of outdoor usage, I think is something that we should be looking at, not just something that only when it's not like. Crappy weather that it can be used, I think that that would make it a lot more viable for more people, more months out of here.
Okay.
Yes, it will.
That also wasn't, you know, like, development too, or, we're looking at that kind of stuff, like, cause people from other towns where they don't have that readily built, and Scotty, again, people will come into town and drive in for that kind of stuff, I think. Those constructions.
Yeah.
Once we, yeah, we're gonna start posting, the traffic is fine, come see us again.
Anybody on the board of other things that they would like to see there, or not see there?
I just know I don't, I don't wanna see a community garden unless we have someone who is super passionate about maintaining that, I've seen those go terrible.
Yeah.
And I'm not in favor of a dump park, cause that's like asking for trouble and, yeah.
I agree, I agree with that. Yeah, and I, I think we, actually, we used to have a community garden space, yeah, behind the church.
Oh, yeah. No, we had them there, they had them over by the sewer.
Yeah, it was over the sewer lane, yeah, stay on.
Oh, yes, yes. Oh, you got the weed patch, and then we'd dig there.
Yeah, well, she, for a while, it was, um, the woman who's right in front there, um. Yeah, and she did, when she was doing it, oh my, it was unbelievable, like, she had.
Yeah, that'd be one person, and then if they leave.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it's, it's almost like if we did that as some sort of garden space, it should almost be greenhouse, and it should be food-based thing, so that, like, then it can be. For the community, it can be a resource, but like, then you have to have someone who's gonna do that, and like, I just don't think we have the, you know, you can't count on somebody, and you can't. Pay somebody to it, so it needs to be low maintenance and.
Well, as far as board goes, right, we're at, uh, school, community space, and fields, sports, so I mean, those are kind of our. Two things here, whereas either, you know, library and community building, or some type of multi-use service.
I don't see how you're getting anything about that for a garden, it's gravel.
No, no, well, like, I, I, you, gardens are pretty.
They even grow anything.
Various different ways, I mean, it was just.
Marijuana shop.
Oh, right, not those, we're not fair to you, okay, no, no.
Jesus, so chunky.
Can't imagine, you can't buy that, forty-five thousand.
Not to go out of school again, but we're looking at. Multi-use courts. Or a potential to construct a library, preferably with a walking path, and with the green space around it. And then look to develop the current place of the library is for future use.
Yes.
Understand that it's not a turnkey situation, yeah. Or have any other thoughts about those two things? I'll draw it all up tonight and send it to you.
Sell it to the school.
And that was actually really beneficial.
Sell it to school district, that whole money.
Old naked match money?
Yeah.
So I think something like this library proposal is certainly achievable, and I know that there are costs to building maintenance, but look at what we're spending on that building that we've got right now. Or barely building, uh, but I think public-private partnerships, whether it's grants or just private given, um. People are charitable if they got something to get.
Oh, yeah, something like we've been like then.
Right, so, uh, something to think about, so now this is where I'm pushing, and that is folks that are present tonight for this wonderful public hearing, cause I know that's why you attended, do you have any thoughts about these two proposals?
My only question is, and maybe you're important.
Oh, no, it's me, Doc.
No, no, it's only. What is good? When New Balance leaves town. What is gonna take, what is gonna happen to that building? And my only question is, is. Are we, as the town narrows walk, in line to acquire that building, I have some, is that, is that in the future, we don't know that yet, but I'm just saying. Instead of building a library and doing all that, there's potentially. A lot of space available to us there, and if you're buying, the parking space, you know, um, access to the main street would be, you know, downtown. And I don't know where we stand, and I don't think it's even close to that yet, so I'm not, I I don't wanna put the cart before the horse, but why would you spend?
Valid, valid.
Big money on a building.
Mercer's done that.
You know, I, I think.
You have to mend your courts there.
So I just, you're, can we just kind of hang back, kind of sit tight, not spend money on that for a while, to see where this all takes out?
I mean, Mercer's done that with a library and town off.
Just, you know, I mean.
Then they get the school, then they, there you go, spend all that money in mountain shit.
No, no, for that, it doesn't, or that's, it's valid, it's valid, um. I don't know if we're gonna have an answer to that in any type of real time.
No, you say it once, I didn't, I, I just say it's, it's.
And if.
So we don't need rush to do anything to that law, you know, either, wait, there's no TikTok on it.
If we were gonna pursue that law. If, if we were, if we decided today we wanna build a library, we, we, a year and a half of engineering, and in two years' time, we'd be voting on it, probably, you're right, uh. So I, I don't, I don't think there is a rush to this, I think really it's more of getting consensus on board. Concept, get it to paper, get it to someone, put a cost, put, I mean, the months and months, municipal wheels are slow.
Or this is just, future potential possible.
But. Right, very valid, I, I know we've talked about this before, but I don't think we're any closer to an answer, or who knows what we went.
So what was, I, I wasn't on the board, what was talked about when you put that on the board? Was there any talk about what you're gonna do with it, the town got it?
Yes.
Was it?
Yes, it was going to avoid the public uncontrolled development of the property, whether it was to. Install a single-wide mobile home on a high visibility spot and connect to public utilities, open up a chop shop or anything else. It was an opportunity for the town in the high-profile location, and.
Have policemen get killed there?
What? It was an opportunity for the town to have a, for a high-misability property, and if, if nothing ever happens for the property, I think. People are comfortable, as long as it's not a negative, you know, right?
Yeah.
To speak to New Balance's point, we have been cooperating with the agencies, including Economic Community Development and Augusta. Uh, you're gonna get sick of this, the best and highest use of a property, that's use of our money and utility by people. It's not in the town's best interest to take ownership of New Balance facility, it's seven acres on a river. And it's relatively stabilized river in that section, so it's very taxable, it's had job opportunities right there, and if we take it over, it's a money hog.
Yeah.
And it's a lot of money that we could get back on the tax rolls, so in our perfect situation, that's one hundred percent private investment, private development.
Let's get that someone else to it.
Job creation or housing that doesn't require public money. Uh, in maybe.
Well, we had a resident that wanted to buy it and like, donate some land, piece of property inside of it, for a library, that.
Could it be a great little room? Yeah, might be. To an extent, but I don't think you're ever gonna see the New Balance facility, I don't think you'll have any public support for the town to acquire that with the intention of.
Yeah, I thought it might have really given much thought, and it's about very valid.
It's a good talk to them, I mean, cause they, cause, I mean.
Are they even talking about like making that public housing?
New Balance, uh, it's pretty normal, it's public, but it's gonna be, New Balance has no intention of retaining that building.
But they're gonna, but they, if they get something out, they ain't gonna give it to Town Narrows Walk.
That's not our business anymore, if they sell something to somebody else, you can.
No, but I mean, if they get a couple million dollars out of that, or through, they ain't gonna give it to Town Narrows Walk, why would they?
The Town Narrows Walk gave it to them for a dollar.
I know, but that, that was then, this is now.
The Town Narrows Walk sold it for a dollar to the Alfon family, which is not.
Right, well, yes, right, they're not New Balance.
New Balance owes us nothing.
No.
Yeah.
It would be very corporate and socially responsible for them to include us in their future plans, and they are doing it.
So, I'm done watching that.
Control in the county level, like, what we approve for, like, you know. I just wanna make sure we don't have, like, the spot where we can put in, where they're gonna throw in, like, thirty low-income housing things in there, like.
There's nothing you can do about.
Really, we don't have things that we have set up for how you can, like, do, um.
Yeah, and we could discriminate here against low income, there's, obviously, they need to come in again.
We're like, so like thirty units inside of there into a place, like, we, aren't we just coming up with different things on like the, the plan?
I am working diligently with agencies to try to find proper revenue sources. I'll look more private, that bring minimal governmental investment to development, and focus more on private investment. The perfect world for us is to have a mixed-use facility that offers maybe community space, retail space, long-term rental, short-term rental, or maybe long-term living.
Light manufacturing or something.
Or things like that, because we have to be very careful about the burden that we put on our services, and the burden that we put on our infrastructure. And it would be wonderful to have all these users on our sewer plant that struggles pays bills, and the water district paying their bills and everything else, but we have capacity limitations. And so we're working to get private investment, and. You know, you want market rate apartments, that's what everybody wants, you don't want low-market rate apartments, you want market rate apartments.
Yeah.
You want long-term and short-term, you want the ability to come in and spend seven days in Main Street Narrows Walk. So you can get on the railroad and come back, or whatever you want, I'll.
I know some narrows up should be in the real estate business, but.
No, you'd hope that we've never had.
No, you'd hope that we'd never have to steer it, but it'd be scary, right, with the wrong, we, we've been so spoiled by having New Balance there, they've been such a great. Piece of our community, uh, I, I would be scared to think some steel company comes in and we've got steel stacked outside or, or freight boxes, I just, um.
What would steel, what, what would that hurt, I ain't, that don't stink, that don't back.
That's a, that's a different thing, that's a different building.
Thank God, yeah. No, it'll, it'll be, it'd be interesting to see.
I mean, someone set up to put snowfolds on, or something, add, I mean, on end of it or something, I mean.
I would, it's about, rather than then we close the public hearing and.
Yeah, we're gonna work.
Some.
No, you know, and I will begin to move, uh, in a planning way on these ideas to try to conceptualize things for you. Uh, and keep it within a small scope, but I'm gonna talk to people about this and that, research funding opportunities is definitely what we wanna do. And obviously, now the audio is working, you are gonna start getting public feedback, it will be to you personally, and it'll be to the town office, so. Um, we do invite that, and we may, I don't know, we're not gonna send another survey out right then, there. You have to serve each other, it must be important to you. Thanks.
Alright, uh, moving forward. Uh, number nine here, a discussion action on donation requests from Common Unity Place.
It's me.
Oh, right there.
You wanna start off with this?
Yeah.
Oh, fun.
This is who we are. Well, this is who we are. So this was done by, um, a United Way, uh, for Common Unity Place, um, they. Gave us some money and they wanted to do this video.
They may come in and be having a great day, they may be coming in and having one of the worst days of their lives. And in a very vulnerable position, and we have managed to just welcome people without judgment. There's a lot of poverty in Somerset County, and a lot of needs, people live in poverty, Somerset County has the highest median in the state. And so we're just trying to be a resource hub, that, you know, so that when people come here. They can get the clothing they need, the food that they need, we offer personal care items and, um, just a place to hang out, to connect with the community. To get a bigger sense of themselves, and again, a community, several volunteers have come, and they started out as, as guests here. Coming to receive clothing, coming to receive food.
And the first day I was not from here was a long, green coat, it was the nicest thing I've ever heard. And so I was a patriot for twenty years. And I've gotten closer to my kids, my grandkids, neighbors, friends, and I like working. Everything, when I go, go away from there, I, you know, fulfill. It gives me a good feeling, knowing that community is open.
So Common Unity Place, uh, got its start, I guess, in March twenty twenty with our first grant through United Way. And, uh, we slowly began to grow and build, we had a clothing ministry already that was developed out of a church basement. And so we tried to build a programming around that, we served last year seventeen hundred meals throughout Tuesday evening meal program. We served thirteen hundred free lunches through our cafe program. We are very blessed by giving community, we would not be able to give out. Two hundred thousand pieces of clothing a year if it was not for our community remembering us, when they're going through their closets, when they're, um, changing seasons. I know that I learned very quickly how many things in my life that I take for granted, and when you don't have your own personal toothbrush. And someone can come here and express joy that they've received one, it's, it's, uh, very moving. The great thing about United Way here in Somerset County is every dollar raised stays in Somerset County. So if you donate, it's gonna help your neighbor, it could help a family member, it could help somebody right across town, down the street. Across the county, but you know you're gonna be helping somebody rather than your local neighbor, and we would not be here without the help and funding of United Way.
They've helped me become part of what they're handed to me, to be able to give that to someone who has given to me or my family. It's a good feeling.
So my wife and I in two thousand eight, um, started this community clothes closet, um, two thousand. And old, um, and it morphed into, uh, a nonprofit. Um, because we couldn't get funding, uh, through a church organization, so we, um, you're, I don't know. He put together a thing for you, but there's an explanation there, what we do and who we are, um, so now we're five one three C. And, um, we started all the things, we do white clothing, we do white clothes. And we've been doing a lot. So, um, as you see, two point, we have records that we keep statistics and statistically. Two point six percent of our customers, customers come from Nard Rock. Um, to get clothing, and we estimate that obviously probably the other two point six come to get free meals. So, um, our total budget is about forty eight thousand dollars to support. Our facility and the one paid position, which is our executive director, which is a quarter time position. Um, so doing all the math, that comes out to what, twenty one twenty five. Um, so that's what we thought maybe the town of Nard Rock would be, um, willing to provide for the people who come.
Yeah.
Questions?
No, that's fantastic, that's really, it's good, self-explanatory, right?
The video is great, but I think that just like the breakdown of services provided, what's to the Nard Rock residents and where the money is going, I think that that's. Quite more in-depth than what we've been used to seeing in the past, so, I mean, I, what, how much do we have?
Left, we do have, left in that account, yes. Two thousand three hundred dollars.
Then I, I guess we'll just move this on, like, if no one has any other questions before I'm out, I move to award the twenty one twenty five to the organization.
I second.
Motion is second, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none?
Yep, sorry, could we have, uh, a letter for our town report? Uh, kind of putting this into a one pager, but then also talking about the services that you offer?
I would also put where we can donate clothes, cause I didn't even know to donate them there, like I shove them in every other hole I can find, like all around town, but, okay, alright.
But, and I appreciate your responsiveness in putting this together, because this is the perfect pack that we would love to see from any organization that requests it. Can you want a one pager, okay? Please, or two?
No.
Okay, all those in favor? That's everybody.
We got very, very news, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, John. Uh, number ten, uh, discussion action on two thousand twenty five proposed property maintenance contracts. We have received a proposal for Nicholson Yard Maintenance with our existing contractor, uh, for grounds maintenance. Uh, the request is here for forty eight thousand dollars, it was a three thousand dollar increase over last year. Uh, so you're seventy eight percent. But it was forty five thousand dollars last year, it was forty five thousand and twenty three, forty five thousand and twenty two, forty five thousand and twenty one, it was forty six thousand and twenty. Back in twenty eighteen, it was the last partial year that we had this in-house, and we paid about forty nine thousand dollars to keep the grass mowed. Less cost of equipment, um, so. It, it's not really a seven or eight percent increase, it's probably maybe just a little bit late catching up. Not for shields there, but the pleasure of the board, this is a project that's big enough to bid it out, um.
Yeah, we're gonna be bidding more than that.
No, definitely.
So I'll put that, we should accept the bid for forty eight thousand dollars from Nicholson Yard Maintenance.
Motion is eight. I'll second, second, any further discussion on this?
Do you have to add a funky thing to our motion that we're not putting it out to bid for what reason?
Put it out to bid anywhere so far.
Did you want?
Yeah, so it's been like three or four years that we haven't bid it out. Yeah.
No, no, I'm saying, cause I was thinking everyone's.
You are correct, uh. Yeah, we should, right, this, with something, I mean, basically, it's not. Cost prohibitive to put it up to bid, I mean, you can't match this number, uh. I guess that is the primary reasoning, right?
So I think better. Uh. Is that the first year they took, it was eighteen?
No, first year, there were two or three of them bid on.
First year was nineteen?
Yeah, they was the first to bid it. York, York.
York.
York had the first.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, I forgot that, so twenty one, I think.
York, you have about ten grand on the table.
Since the twenty three season.
For a few years of them.
But I'm pretty sure that forty, forty. Anyway, we had York for a couple of years and then make us.
And freedom.
Yeah.
Get the jet, get the world.
So, uh, Kelsey is correct, uh, I don't have the citation from the. Policy. In front of me, but my recommendation is for the chair to set the current motion aside and entertain the motion to receive this. Sometimes the effect of waiving. The bidding of this contract out, as it is in the best financial interest of the town.
So.
Seven.
So, this is, we do this year to year.
Yes, but before we accept the contract, we had it in kind of internal policy that we would move to waive.
Right.
Policy if we're going to.
Right.
So before you call, um, the contract itself will move to waive the policy in the best financial interest of the town.
And that's what we've got out there right now, the motion is second, so. Unless there's further discussion on the waiving of the bid policy, all those in favor of waiving? That's everyone, and then back to our original motion to award contract inefficience at the forty eight thousands. Uh, there's a motion is second, is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all of those in favor, and that's everyone as well. Thank you for reminding, that's why you're here, it's important, so thank you. Uh, number eleven, uh, discussion action on, uh, local, uh, poll location permit, there we go.
Uh, this is the request of CFP to, uh, set new polls and replace existing polls on Main Street. Which is always a center. It is simply a motion to approve signing the application permit for notification one three, code one 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 seven one four, seven.
Motion is a second, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, that's everyone.
They have to do that every time you do.
It's in the right way.
Uh, uh, number twelve here, uh, code enforcement update on junkyard tracker.
I intended to get you the tracker itself in front of you today, so the code enforcement officer, but we had the lunch yesterday, so. Hand me some of the things called through the crack, I am here to tell you that we've had approximately twenty certified notices go up once, two weeks from the code enforcement office. That is not, uh, notices are violated, and those are spike visits, for dropping of the patient photograph. And then the follow-up, notices are violation. People have been responsive, and for those people that have been responsive, I say thank you, they're reaching out to say, what am I missing, what do I need to do, when do I need to do it? I can't do it in that amount of time, can you give me a little bit more time? Uh, and then some people are calling and saying it's done, come on, check it.
Good, cool, good.
I have had one negative. Hard nose, but now soft nose thing about it, completely understood, but it is so good to see progress and. I am gonna be interested in at least to show you that junkyard tracker, where you can see the videos to move, uh, and we're working with, um. Folks to come into compliance on other things as well, not just the junkyard, uh, there are things like dangerous building out on the. Uh, Skyway and Road, the purple used to be garage that has maybe allegedly, uh, fluids.
Yeah.
Drips of what might in there, uh, he's gonna initiate the process of dangerous buildings and really force his owners to start cleaning up the property, so. We don't want to force people to do anything, so the goal is to comply on your own. Uh, it makes everybody's life easier, it actually lowers your taxes because wages are then down and expenses are down, but quite frankly. He's going to be eighty K certified, really eighty K certified means that we do not need to retain an attorney to take folks to court. Which is not where we wanna be, but it is a very cost-effective way for us to get compliance, um.
With eighty K, you mean?
It's the section of statute, um, for code enforcement that allows them to take folks to court for non-compliance with land use. Uh, issues, so that would enable him to go to court on a junkyard and go to court order for cleanup or daily penalty. It's the last place that we want to be, but we have.
It's nice that someone's already certified to do this stuff.
Up to the conglomerate landlords that just refuse to comply, and it's unfortunate, but when you refuse to comply, and again, it's your land. But you're devaluing your name as land, okay, so, um, anyway, I am very encouraged, my staff is encouraged. Um, and so, hopefully after the next meeting, you will be too, but I, I'm just very pleased with how things are going.
And we, we have avenues to assist or offer assistance, uh, with either. Vehicle removal, if that be the case, or, uh, better access to dumpsters for these people, making them aware of their abilities with. Uh, cause I, 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 a lot of people don't realize that you pay less for a dumpster from waste management, cause you live in Nard Rock. Uh, is that, I don't know if these people are aware of those things, and if they have the avenues to find that out.
Yeah, we off, we try, I mean, we've got two or three different business cards out front for folks that buy two of the cars, we're gonna haul them off, you don't get a ton, but you get something. It's not, excuse to give junk car to your property, unfortunately, the folks that are piling up these junk cars. Suffer from mental illness, you know, where they find, no, I mean, I don't mean to be rude.
No, it, it's, it is a warning, well, I mean.
Yes, reason those cars.
Warnings, right, and, and when you start to collect. Six, eight, or ten junk cars in your front yard, it's because you need those cars to satisfy, and for whatever reason. It's not natural to want junk cars in your front yard.
There's your junk people.
Want a dirty house, everybody wants a clean house, you have a dirty house, cause you don't wanna do anything about it, nobody wants that. Unless something's wrong, so it's really unfortunate, and that's why we try to be sensitive with these, enough is enough. This town has got probably a hundred junk cars in it.
Yeah.
And we're trying to make the town a better place, and this is a step in a direction that we need to move, so, I'm sorry, but. The time has come.
Yeah, no, I just, again, I think they sort of make them aware that there's assistance in some fashion to help with, cause I know things like this can be overwhelming and.
Get a fence.
It's more get a fence, right, if it's behind a fence, nobody else, not a solution, but it certainly makes it look better, we're moving forward here with just number thirteen.
Maybe we can get a ramp or some fences.
Other, does the board have anything for other business? Uh, Richard, do you have anything for other business? Okay, uh, then, uh, unless the public jump, please.
Um, I don't know if all of you, any of you know, but the first grades now are going down to the mural once a year. Um, to, and my wife and the artist go and show them the mural as part of their community involvement. Um, and the other thing I wanted, if you look at the mural now and you look at the bottom, all of the, that Dr. Anne Dorney has taken that under her wing. And she has worked with the horticultural group at the high school to plant all indigenous plants from the town of Nard Rock.
Cool.
So, um, it's more than just a mural, it's a, it's a, the area has been, she's doing it just a marvelous job and. The kids from this, uh, I just love it.
That's fantastic.
That actually makes me think of. Um, I rode the horses back behind there, there's a building that a butt stop. Looks like trash, so if you're looking at that building, sweet baby Jesus, it's disgusting.
Yeah, it is.
It is so gross and dirty and trashy looking, like if we can build in. Some sort of natural buffer, because honestly, you can't even look at that, because you're like, ew.
And we talked all about, Ian talked about putting shrubs in there.
Yeah, we need to do something, cause I don't think we, it's not a junkyard to make it clean it up.
No, no, we don't build the wall.
It's, it like, I mean, I don't see that getting better, and it look, and it's an eyesore.
It is now considered a junkyard because the trail is a public way. It is gonna be visible from a public way, yeah.
I still think, I, I mean.
There's also.
Kind of shrubs.
I, 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 I agree, if, if, if it can't be remedy, it should be covered up.
People doing things like this and taking the time to make, to make it nice, then, you know.
No, you're right.
We should, you know, mitigate any sort of out of our control ugly happen.
Okay, if they did.
Looks awful.
Oh, so, so the president's office also told, and that is improvement.
And is it like a yoga massage, what is that? But it's like, they're like.
Sorry, uh, piggybacking on John's comment, so the first crews came here to vote, they did a field trip down to the mural and Dr. spoke to him.
Slurpers.
But they also installed their.
We come around the Johnson first for this.
The little library, actually, yeah, the little library that was installed on Friday, um, the parts committee, uh, saw. The, the big pair of businesses have been out all in town in Nard Rock ribbon, they had a ribbon cutting fifty little firm grabbers, uh, it was really kind of cool for them. And they filled it with books, they walked over the principal or whatever, um, but. Yeah, it's kind of cool, so stop by, take a book, leave a book, um, and it's good to see that we have grade teachers and first graders that are out in the community.
Yeah.
So, um, really good stuff out there, so thank you for the school for that quarterback, so, cool. And Franklin Stane has been donating cupcakes to the kids. Really, yeah, they, they do a lot.
Great, so I guess I will move to adjourn if there's anything else.
There's a motion.
Second.
A second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?